Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'll start out with the amended approved agendas. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections at this time? And I have, under, had to add, under the consent agenda part there, I have to add, resolution de-certifying delinquent claims. That'll be under eye of the consent agenda. Any other additions or deletions?
I have one here, under new business, number four, the resolution establishing term appointments for the fire department officers. I'm gonna take that one off. You'll have to do some further research on the current fire chief's position. I decided that it wasn't necessary.
Okay. Any other? Under E on the consent agenda, if we want to put that, the conferences, under new business. Conferences. Number six.
Well, yeah, I'd be number five now, but six is fine.
Any others? Okay, then, if not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry? Okay, all those in favor of passing the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed name. Approved agenda's passed. Anything to be discussed? Any more on the consent agenda? Can I get a motion then on the consent agenda? Motion? Motion's been made in favor of consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed name. Consent agenda's passed. Next up is visitors to the council. Don't think we have any public forum.
Chris McCurn, 523 Twenty-First Place, Northeast in Casson. I guess my comments are gonna change just a little bit since the agenda item was taken off that was, I guess abruptly put on with no explanation. So I guess I just wanna read what I have here. I've got some questions. Take it for what it is. And if you have, would like the questions in writing and you would actually respond to them, I will email them to you. If not, so be it. Seems the fire department's been a hot topic over the past twelve months. And I'll just give you an example. Now, tonight's the third time. Last May, fire hall discussion was on the agenda, taken off before the meeting. In July, fire hall discussion on the agenda, we discussed something there. Nothing ever came of it, but we discussed something there. Tonight, something about the fire hall on the agenda, a resolution to change something, taken off before the meeting. Those three things have at least one thing in common, if not more. There was nothing in the packet to explain why the fire hall discussion was even on there. What were we gonna discuss? Were you gonna make a decision? I mean, twice that's happened now. And the one time something was discussed, nothing ever came of it, months. So, I guess, a couple of questions. What's the problem? Who's got the problem? What is it? Are you looking for an individual? A system? A department? What's the problem? Who's the problem? Who are you after? I think you owe that. Whoever's putting this on there owes that to people. You can't just be putting things on disrupting a whole department. Well, dedicate what they do, not just a volunteer who plans a parade. These are volunteers who plan, train, and do everything they can do to have a big red truck throw up in front of your house and take your kids out of a burning house. That's all the people at Casson care about, are people safe. So quit causing trouble. It always is causing trouble. If you think it's gonna fix something that happened four or five years ago and you still got something in your craw over that, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna work. You can't fix the past by destroying the future. So if that's the case, things happen, it's over, move forward. So I guess I'm just gonna close this as, I'm sure if something was put on the agenda for a resolution to pass and make a change, you know, my question was gonna be, who wanted and why? We just figured that out. We don't know the why. So why? How would it benefit the taxpayers of Casson? If you're gonna make changes to something, it should benefit the taxpayers. Case of the fire department, how's it gonna make Casson safer? Is it legal? Was the attorney a consultant? Was the League of Minnesota Cities consultant? What's their recommendations? What was wrong or bad about the current way things are being done? Was there any consideration of making changes at the fire department, whether it's apparatus or training or officers, wherever it be? We have an insurance rating for our community, for our homeowners' insurance. Is there any implications of that? I don't know. But are those things that were thought about before this was thought to be changed? How are the discussions between whoever wanted the resolution and the fire department? I mean, what kind of discussions there are going? If there's been a problem with the fire department, there must be dialogue between the five of you, or one or two of you, and the fire department directly, correct? With the officers, the chief, any of the people showing up at their Monday night meetings? I'm sure that's the case, right? Or no? How many discussions has there been between this and the fire hall? With this resolution tonight, was there anything said to any of the firefighters that, hey, we're gonna put this down and make a change? What do you think? There wasn't.
Well, let me tell you something. I didn't put it on the agenda.
Then I'm not talking to you.
Well, exactly. So don't, you're getting to the point.
I'm asking, I don't know.
And I'm explaining.
Okay. Explain how, whoever it was, explain how it was the right way to treat people. I mean, these are employees of the city. Don't you think they'd have the right to know if something might be changed and if there's any input? In the resolution, it doesn't say who would be appointed to positions. Maybe that'd be nice to know. Who's gonna appoint them? Is that person even gonna qualify to appoint them? It says that the two-year terms are based on qualifications of each position. Will qualifications stay the same as they are now? What would those qualifications be? Who determines the qualifications? I just, it's just very frustrating. And here's the part I think gets to it, it's like I said last summer when I spoke, it's not the what, it's the how. The fact that a resolution, I don't know anything about tournaments and fire halls, don't know anything about it. Is it the right thing, wrong thing? I don't, that's not the point. Things get put on the agenda and there's no information if people make a decision whether this is something to be upset about, or hey, maybe we should go and just listen to discussion. And then how are agendas set? I guess that's a procedural thing, but if the mayor doesn't know that a resolution's gonna be put on the agenda that could be voted on tonight to make a change before it goes on, with his name printed at the bottom of it, ready to sign, that would tick me off if I was in your seat. I mean, if I was the mayor, I'd wanna know what's going on the agenda. So how does that get set? So, a couple suggestions, maybe for everybody's benefit, if there's gonna be a, like last May and, you know, the July fire hall discussion, there should be something in the package that says, here's what we're thinking about and why. That way, people would decide, is this something to be upset about, or, oh, it's procedural and we're just gonna move on. And on the agenda, would you make consideration of if there's gonna be action items? This is an action item. We're gonna take action on this. Or discussion or informational. So that way, people don't think, oh, it's on the agenda, I better get up, cite about rumors start. It might help with communication. Communication is key. I think if you communicate ahead of time, you can avoid a lot of rumors and it all shows social respect to your employees. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Steve Jern, 406 12th Avenue Northwest. With the proposed resolution for discussion, I think pulled from the agenda, kinda takes it out of the window of the sails for what I was going to talk about tonight. You do have the documents in front of you. I made some extra copies that went across the audience here, so I will reserve my comments for a future point in time if this does resurface. But I would echo a little bit on Chris's points that, you know, as you're reading the document I provided, I'm in the middle of a master's program. This fit in very well with the last two weeks of study, talking about government and how it operates and so on. And a couple of points that I saw with the resolution itself, there were some concerns. This was what I was gonna speak to, and some also, some summary options and that type of thing, but I'll reserve those comments for a future day.
Thank you. Thank you. Any else? Public hearing, move on to committee report. Library Board.
Art Kip, Casson Public Library Director. Before I start, there's a Division Three that we have to, that the Board, the Library Board approved last night, and I want to get to the council to have them also approve it, and I'll go into it in just a second here. But I'll hand it out first. So, sorry. What this is, is three estimates that we, that we took to the council or the board last night at our, at our regular board, monthly board meeting. What it is, is proposal for the slab or the floor, the, for the library floor, and there's three different estimates. The first one, from J-Rock Construction and Concrete for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Now, these, what I'm giving you right now is just the labor. It's not the concrete, it's just the labor, okay? The second one is Midwest ICF Construction out of Winona, Minnesota. Excuse me, the first one was out of Salt Lake City, Utah. From Winona, this one is forty-six thousand seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars just for the labor replacing the concrete floor. The last one that we had was from Greystone Concrete and Construction out of Winona. And that one was, it says forty-five thousand, but the top, the bottom, two, the one thousand nine hundred and fifty and the three thousand seven hundred and fifty were withdrawn from the, from the estimate. So their estimate was only, was really only thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So the council, not council, the Library Board and Board of Trustees last night approved the J-Rock Construction for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Okay, you take that, and before you ask me, how is that in the budget? We have budgeted, sorry, I beat you to it. I'm ready for this. The budget is forty thousand for the labor. We can do with this, we can do the labor and the concrete for less than forty thousand dollars if we go with J-Rock. The price of concrete is roughly thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the concrete, concrete, or the labor for that is seventeen thousand five hundred, so you can total that up to about thirty-one, two-hundred and fifty, or something like that. How can they do it? They bring a big crew in. They move in, in the morning they start, and they move off the next night with it finished, with the concrete finished, with the ceiling on it, with it cut, and everything ready to go for the framing and sheet rocking and that end of the sentence. So what I would like, if, so there's any other questions, I would like to propose that the council go along with what the Library Board of Trustees did last night and, and approve that.
I have a few questions for you.
Yes, sir.
It says proposal excludes survey, layouts, staking. Who's doing all that?
That's already done, and that's done by Heinz Construction.
That was already?
That's already in, and Heinz, excuse me, Swanky Heinz Contract.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that.
So, yeah, everything will be done. All they do is come in and pour the concrete and close the door.
And this, and then it'll meet to their, okay. Making sure there was no hidden?
They've done this in Texas and Oklahoma, in round buildings before, many times. Yep.
I see they, I see they, probably the library in Casson? Do they know where Casson is?
Evidently not. Maybe I better make sure of that, huh? Because that might be, they might think that's Casson, either, or something. Anyway.
They have roughly ten thousand square feet?
It's, it's ten thousand five hundred square feet is what it really is. Yeah, they know, they're aware of that. Yep, they're aware that that's changed, five hundred, five hundred square, or square feet.
So it's not just a thousand dollars, they're just under.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was no seal on that?
There, excuse me, right, there is no seal on that, that's right, Doug, I'm sorry. Thanks for correcting it. There is no seal because of what the plan in the future on what we may be doing to that floor.
No vapor barrier, bear, no big vapor barrier underneath of it?
You're right, no, it's required, no.
And I worry about moisture?
No.
It'll wet up there?
No.
Okay. Well, I think the proposal from J-Rock looks good. Can I get a motion then on that, for J-Rock Construction?
I'll make that motion.
Second. The motion's been made for J-Rock Construction and Concrete of the library. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed name. Motion passed.
Thank you. Just a couple of the things. The raising of the dome last week, it was, it was well attended. We had three TV stations come to interview and take pictures. Post-Bolson was there, DCI was there, Just Like Home was there. They brought their kids over and as the dome was going up, they were standing there cheering and it was just, it was really great. Mary Johnson was there, councilperson Coy Bortstrom was there. Police Department also had a representative there. And there was, we figured between sixty and seventy people, but since then, when we put it on, the pictures and the little story about it on Facebook, we've had three thousand nine hundred and fifteen viewers of that new library. So, we're pretty excited about that. Another thing is, the insulation is being sprayed. It should be, it should be probably done today and they'll start doing spraying on the concrete. And they figure that by mid-March, they should be done with the con, insulation and the concrete and the roof of the dome by that time. Then they can come in and clean that, and come in with the electricians and the plumbers and the heating crews come in and do their thing. And then, the floor will be done for that. I will have two divisions that I will be bringing to the council probably next time, Division Eight, Nine, which is the doors and windows, and also the framing, that we have to get estimates on that. And we're pretty close to that. I just didn't quite have it already tonight, so we'll just have it ready for next week and two weeks from now. Okay? And with that, thank you to the City of Casson, to the council, to everyone, for this project. I think it's gonna be a good project, a good thing for the City of Casson, for the future. I appreciate it. Dan?
Do you, do you know roughly when they will be putting it forward?
Uh...
I'm not holding you to it, I just got.
No, I don't. I can only say that the project should be done by June first.
No schedule yet?
June first.
Did you, did you have a schedule?
It's not, it's not in writing, it's in Word right now.
Yep.
Oh, I forgot to mention, also, there will be painting part, and you all are invited to attend. I promise, because that's gonna be volunteer work. So, thank you all being here.
Okay, next up, old business, request for proposal for city attorney.
And you have received kinda that bid sheet, and I did make available copies of that proposal from each of the firms. I had some council members approach me about discussing that, and hopefully you've had your questions answered. And, does anything else I can help you with, I don't know?
What do you guys think? I'm partial to, I looked at Weber and Leff, and Wesner, I guess it is. Had some valuable help from Melissa on this too, and I like, you know, they're local, they are your, you and Doc's, they're Doc's Center.
Let me give us three options?
They got three options. I think, as far as the options, I would start out with the hourly for six months, and then we'll see how it goes, and we can always go to retain or we can switch it around and run all the options, so. You know, they, we'll be, they can come to any meeting, they won't charge. Really, I think a pretty good opportunity there.
Because I know, like, the ones that were, we looked at, they didn't even do prosecutions, so.
No, no.
That wasn't even gonna work.
No.
So they look like, just with those expressions I had too.
Yep. Doug?
Yep, it was my feeling.
Well, then I think we should probably, I'd like to get them going because they need to start working with Joe.
Right.
Joe's what, April first?
Yes, he would like to have.
I think they should be on board by first of March, don't they?
That's what Joe would prefer, yes.
Okay.
So if you'll make a motion, then we can let everybody know what's happening.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion then to hire, for a city attorney starting March first, Weber, Leff, and Wesner.
I'll take a motion on that.
With, with the options that we listed?
Right, yes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made for a request for city attorney to be Weber, Leff, and Wesner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed name. Motion passed.
I'd like to say thanks to Mel. Appreciate it.
Next up, new business, governor's proposal for bonding bill.
I just wanted you to have that information because both the Casson wastewater treatment plant project and the Manorville wastewater treatment plant project, which will come together right here in town, were listed on his bonding bill. It most likely means that we'll have some PFA financing money available for both of those projects.
That's a good thing. Next up, the Council Greenway tax abatement.
This actually looks a lot more impressive than it is. Basically, what it, what it is, the finishing up of an industrial project. In two thousand eleven, the city, county and schools district agreed to provide tax abatement to Greenway co-op based on the increased taxes from putting up a million, a million bushel plus new bin. That bin necessitated some improvements to the city's electrical system, which we made Greenway partially pay for. After three, at least three public hearings, the city, the county, and the schools district all agreed to abate the increased taxes for a period of five years. The reason they did that, some of the arguments were that the improvements in the electrical system would serve more than just Greenway. The increased job opportunities would be in the public interest, and the eventual tax increase would be a benefit to all taxpayers. Well, it's not specifically stated in this development agreement, all the negotiations revolved around a roughly ninety-three thousand dollar cost and reimbursement figure. The agreement was written in such a way that the ninety percent of the new taxes would be abated over a period of five years. And the estimates that we were using in two thousand eleven suggested that we would, that would be yielded in a period of five years. Because the second bin was built and the taxes were increased far beyond what we expected them to be in two thousand eleven, the project now has generated just under ninety thousand dollars in taxes that would be rebated to, to Greenway. There's a figure in the document that says forty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars would be paid to CHS, which is the current owner of the property. This isn't a payoff, it isn't a buyout. What this represents is the two thousand fifteen payment that would have been made to CHS. The city held onto that since last November, basically as leverage to bring CHS to this agreement. It got their attention a little bit better than the letter from me. It's possible through the sale of the facility between Greenway to CHS, that we could have invoked a clause in the development agreement that says, we don't owe you anything more. In that case, we would have turned it over to our attorney and their attorney, and they would have thought out how much, you know, who gets what. And I can almost guarantee that with a co-op, actually two co-ops, and three units of government, you're probably gonna spend more than forty-seven thousand dollars in legal fees to hash this out. So basically, what this agreement does is, we all shake hands, said, everybody did what we agreed to do in two thousand eleven. And we go on from here.
Yeah, we discussed it at the EDA yesterday also, and it was unanimous approval on that. Any other, just questions, discussion on it? Do you think, can I get a motion to cancel the Greenway tax abatement?
Motion?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to cancel the Greenway tax abatement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed name. Motion passed.
This, I believe we went to the county board yesterday, and we'll go to the school board on the twenty-second.
Thanks, Mike. Next up, amendment to the fee ordinance for online credit payment policy.
So we do have an opportunity to utilize a service that allows our customers, utility customers, to go online and make a credit card payment. The firm that's providing us with that portal is asking that we have a credit card policy in place before we start utilizing their service, and this would be the credit card policy that would be posted on the website that folks access before making their payment.
Any questions? Do you think, can I entertain a motion then for the amendment to the fee ordinance for the online credit payment policy?
I like that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made, amendment to the fee ordinance for the online credit payment policy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed name. Motion passed. Next up, product quotation for the planer, Miller.
Miller, right. Yep. So, this is coming to us under a state contract, so we did not have to go get quotes on our own. The state had already put it out for bid and acquired the best possible price for this product, and we will be able to get, I believe this will build a twenty-fifteen pricing. We're gonna sneak in and still get the twenty-fifteen pricing on them. That's why there's just one quote in your pocket.
They weren't locked in on that until twenty-ninth.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Any discussion on that? Get a motion then on the planer?
Motion?
Second.
Motion's been made for the, on the product quotation for the planer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proposed name. Motion passed. Next up, the conferences, which was added.
Well, this was conferences that the chief and the deputy chiefs were going to. I just had some questions from some people in town on the cost of them, and if it was necessary for four to go, and I was just gonna get to dealing with everyone else here, and what you thought of it.
Have you been to them before?
Yes, yes.
Is it something, is it useful training that you're getting there? Is it the same people going? You must've been there like in eleven, huh?
Yeah.
There were some pictures of them, yeah.
It's been a couple of years, yes. The purpose of this specific FDIC is an opportunity for us to engage directly with the manufacturers of the products the department purchases, lays the groundwork, precisely save money in the long term. As we look at the equipment that was bought between that time and the last time, we estimate our savings of at least forty, fifty thousand dollars in product that we bought. So more than covered the expense just when we interface with them directly, working with manufacturers directly, and then coming back through the vendor structure, we actually get a, get a better pricing structure that way. It's like a large trade show type thing where you go to. Instead of working with like Fire Safety USA, work directly with the manufacturer, the hose, the manufacturer, the air patch, that type of thing, and lay the groundwork for your future purchases.
Okay, I ended up seeing quite a few picture seminars you went to, and then there's equipment and stuff on there. I almost put a bunch of them in.
Training and equipment show.
Any other questions?
I just, are the same four gentlemen going that went before?
Right, it's usually administrative staff that will actually be engaged in the purchasing process in the future.
Okay, does it make sense to take someone new to it to see it? Ask my other questions? Does it make sense to take someone new to it to see it? Ask my other questions, there's some other people that'd like to go down and see it too, that may be coming up through administration at some point in time, or... Just a question.
Could be maybe a future consideration, I suppose.
Good.
Sure, go ahead.
At this point, it hasn't been addressed that we would look to take a vendor department to that event. It's not something that we would not look at, you know, for, down the road for future references. I know we've got several officers that make, you know, recommendations to us in regards to different equipment and things like that that we purchase now, so it's, it's definitely something that we would, we would consider. At this point, registrations are, are, are in and paid for. I mean, we could, we could add to that or, you know, make phone calls to try and change things, but at, at this point, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's probably best to leave it as is. We can't mess around changing too much.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely an experience that at some point in time, I would like all of our members to get to, because it is, I mean, it's, it's quite a deal. I mean, we literally walked nonstop for two and a half days to, to see everything. It's held at the Indianapolis Convention Center, along with the Indianapolis Colts Stadium, right next to each other, and it's, a place like this would probably have twenty different vendors, just this, a room this size, so you can all imagine, it's quite, quite the event, plus the, like, the person he did said, you know, just laying that groundwork and networking with the vendors and the people that we do business with, to secure the best prices that we can get.
Be interesting when you came back, maybe bring, get pictures again and stuff. I'd like to see that.
Report? We can definitely do that.
Get a report or whatever, yeah, if you need.
Absolutely.
How many, how many days do you guys have then? I see there's different packages you could get there.
What we do is, we do the, the three-day exhibit package. The, the cost to us, because we've, we've been involved and we're subscribers to some of the FDIC stuff, is, is fifty dollars for us a piece to get into that three-day exhibit package.
Oh, yeah, see, none of those prices were listed where I was looking. It was all quite a bit higher.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, it's, you can, you can spend three or four grand on a, on a seven-day training package. So, yeah, we, we're not, we're not quite to that point where we need to be spending that kind of money to send-
And our training budget doesn't that decrease.
Send people to that, to that kind of training.
Good. I'm a part of that, I'm a part of that. You got any discussion and questions? Do you think, I guess we'll have, we'll have the motion on this to pass it now, so we're gonna get a motion into the conferences for the officers to attend.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made for the conferences for the department officers to attend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed. Next up, mayor's report. I don't have really much other than I wanna thank, she says she's doing a fantastic job with people, and, and she's really, very knowledgeable, very helpful.
Thank you for putting the calendar up, too.
Oh, you're welcome.
So thank you for what you're doing. I also wanna, you see Nick, your, these city streets are, I, I've been around a lot of towns, I haven't seen any look so good in the way. You guys are really doing a heck of a job.
We, we are getting lots of really good feedback.
I get calls when they're not good, and I haven't gotten any of those.
I got a couple, but it was mine.
We've tweaked a couple, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's been very, very good, so tell the guys out there, thank you. Next up, administrator's report.
So I just had the council work session, so it turns out some of the dates that we tossed around at your last meeting didn't work for everybody. So, the next one out there is March fifth. I don't know how deep, you wanna go into March?
I mean, let's start with this coming Saturday. Can anybody, can we all do it this Saturday?
I'll, I'll be in Marshall.
Okay. So we're not, we're in the March.
Yeah, yeah.
March fifth?
I could go for the first week in March, if anybody's up to that.
March, yeah. I'm okay with it. Good drive. Well, I say we set a date and-
Okay.
Go to, get there, get there.
All right.
Doug, March fifth?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
March fifth will be eight o'clock, then I'll be the, player, public works, again like we did last year.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next up, engineers' report. Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Your council packet is a proposal from Integrative Technology Engineering Incorporated. That is for the two thousand sixteen ICE Arena indoor project, excuse me, indoor quality updates. What that is, is part of the Mighty Ducks grant that the city received to replace a dehumidifier unit and also increase air quality within the ICE Arena, and also increase energy efficiency. Integrative Technology is a firm that we work with on a regular basis. We're working with them as a subconsultant to us for electrical design at the treatment plant, so they're familiar with working with us and also the City of Kessin. So we've had, up to this point, a preliminary meeting with city staff, county staff, and also the ICE Arena staff to kind of lay the groundwork of the scope of the project. Since that meeting, we've developed this proposal, our Integrative Technology has developed this proposal for the final design phase. What that includes is a final design, bidding of the project, construction administration of the project, and then, once it's bid, the, the grant application would ultimately be administered by the city administrator. So what that said again is to complete the Mighty Ducks grant application for the improvements at the ICE Arena, and happy to answer any questions you have.
We're gonna, as ICE Arena Committee, we're gonna be meeting again here-
Next Thursday night.
Next Thursday night, because there are a lot of questions that we still have, and Brandon was gonna give the answers for us and that.
Regarding this?
Yeah, regarding the-
Not regarding the proposal.
Not regarding the scope of, of the engineering design, it's more the nuts and the bolts of what we're doing. So my recommendation would be to proceed with this proposal here to start the engineering, the IT, integrated technology. We'll come back with answering some of those questions, the meeting on Thursday. At that meeting, we would likely finalize the scope of the project and then turn, finalize documents to begin construction.
Any other discussion on that? Do you want to get moving on that? Do you think, can I get a mo, can I get a motion then for a proposal?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Do you think motion's been made for those for the Dodge County, City of Kessin, Minnesota, two thousand sixteen ICE Arena indoor air quality update design phase? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nothing on our personnel, and then we just have correspondents, which we'll look into. Meetings adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
We're both crafters, you didn't know we made shirts.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have somebody going up to the nation?
No, uh, I will go talk, I'm gonna talk with Charlie. Charlie has the notification, so he knows all about it. I'll just hear if I was there, he's, he's had to go. Okay?
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. We got to sign a table. We got some paperwork.